Walk, yes.
I'm okay with combining, but I was before I say yeah, I wouldn't know what the price would be. Or closer than that. On time to say.
It depends on the experience, education, and all of that. It'd be somewhere within that range, probably closer to that. From the forty-five-one to the midpoint would probably be my best. Probably not even quite to the midpoint. I imagine it would be somewhere around forty-four, forty-six. Depending on if they're depending on what the level of experience of the applicant is.
Right.
Are you there with forty?
We don't want to, we want somebody that's qualified. We don't want to get somebody that we can just get for forty-one. We want somebody that is definitely qualified, so we have to pay them a little bit more and we have to pay them a little bit more.
I think we ought to look something to say about that. Would you think we do, you and your children?
No.
We won't?
No. This is a, this is a staff position. We will not. Supervise.
We want to bring them in at the minimum for a good time. If those were tested.
They always start.
That's what I mean, you know, the logical thing is, is this is a range that we're willing to pay for this job, depending upon the credentials that you have coming and experience with it. Typically, you're setting to the deep, a person who has worked in this field for a very long period of time and comes to the expertise and bring the baggage to the seat that we're looking for. And also gives room for that person to grow in the range as they progress with their skill sets. And so, and it makes sense to me that.
That is potentially, but I would never hire somebody that said.
Oh, I know, I agree.
If they were that qualified, I gotta move to somebody else.
Sorry, but the thing is, is to allow somebody to grow with the job is what it can.
Correct. And, and as I said before, and the other thing is, it needs to be compatible on the pay range as to what the other supervisor can affect. Correct. That senses to move forward.
Yes.
Now, this, we'll roll over when you take official action tomorrow to establish those positions. Thank you. Item three eight-two, Mr. Review Costs, for me to replace him, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you have a copy of an invoice that went to one of our builders relative to the cost for the meter damage that was done at a new construction site. You remember that we had brought this to you as a recommendation from E S G, and the process we recommended to you all was to have it handled in a standard code enforcement prospect, in other words, similar to what we do with mowing. And so, you can see on the bill about what the cost is for the items. Everybody see where I am there? You know, and then you have the surcharge of the fifty percent, which is what's done on code enforcement actions, and you have the ten percent. Everybody see where I am, coming down to that cost? This particular builder was concerned that that was an excessive cost and that there should be something that's done in between. I advised him that I would bring that to you and let you know. Administration's standpoint is, we recommend that we keep it the same, because the primary thing we are trying to do is to discourage, you know, contractors or their subs coming in and tearing up our meters and having to go back out and replace it.
If they, if they go to replace, you know, we got to replace them.
No, we have to go back and replace it.
One of the contractor's subs did something that destroyed the meter. We necessitated us going back out and replacing. And this is, this bill and this is the policy. The contractor is asking for some leniency the first time.
Just a, just a production. Now, of course, if it's contractor, contractor, they take out subcontractors, you don't pay.
You think that too much, right?
Yeah, contractor.
Yes. We got to do what we did to everybody else. So, we play with it, we got. We got them seated, you know what I mean? And then we just call, let them know that we don't let them see that follow any particular right?
Right.
Good.
Thank you. Item three D, Department of Community Development, three D wants to consider an authorization for use of the A D S storm pipe. Mr. Murray, I'm sorry.
Looking for me, I was high. Oh, good afternoon. Oh, just to start with, I guess February twenty-third, I did a quick memo regarding A D S pipe installation, as I've had multiple inquiries. Recently, O'Monk, O'Monk Engineering has requested A D S pipe, thus to consider using that in the city, because D O T has recently approved the use of A D S pipe under the roadways. Of course, we had some entry of concern and some questions, so I passed this question on to our review engineer, Mr. Burke Murph, and he responded with a letter of, of, of an idea, I guess you would say, to use a pilot project. A pilot project would have some minimal control requirements, which was attached to that letter. Those minimum requirements would be some installation inspections involved in the pipe, and also, I guess you would say, I counted for a possibility of a bond or maybe a letter of credit regarding a one-year maintenance. If the pipe holds up over a year, then we could consider moving that into our specs of the city as approved pipe. Today with me, I brought a couple of A D, A D S representatives and several, engineer Brian Felder.
Felder.
Felder, I said that right, and Jason Chance. They are going to give you a brief overview of the pipe and their installation instructions and what they have to offer to offer the cities of security that the pipe will hold up for the city.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to come up here and talk to you guys for just about three or four hours, about our product. I sometimes I have to make sure it makes away. No, we'll be as brief as you'd like, but we'll answer as many questions as you like. And I don't bring any DIP Pepsi bottles with me everywhere I go, because there's something wrong with me that actually, this would be a good prop to kind of help us present this product. How many of you guys have been to the A D S plant here in town? Great, I, I personally have not been on a plant tour. I live in Montgomery, Alabama. Jason lives up close to Warren Robbins. I know he's been to numerous plant tours. We would love to have any of you, if you've already been, if you haven't, we'd love to have you on a plant tour. A D S has been around for fifty years. This is actually our fifty-first year. We brought the polyethylene, the H D P E, pipe to America fifty-one years ago. It started off making it board, six-inch pipe for the, for the farmers and for the ag market, and it just grew and grew up to now we make it up to sixty inches in diameter, which is about five feet tall, it's about as tall as Jason's. We make it all the way up to sixty inches. We are not only just in the ag market, we are in the subdivision, commercial, D O T, just about any storm drain market you can think of, our products are involved in that. Kind of some of the things that Chad mentioned earlier, I know in this area with the H D P E, and for simplicity's sake, let me just say, for this presentation real quick, I'm going to call the H D P E the black pipe, which is made out of a black plastic. What we're talking about today, I'm going to call the gray pipe, which kind of helps differentiate the two. The black pipe, we know, you know, there's been some times when contractors maybe didn't put it in right, maybe the right backfill, the right dirt, soil around it, and it caused some issues. We came out with this product, which is made out of a different resin, it's made out of polypropylene instead of polyethylene. We came out with this, we did about three years of research, spent about twenty million dollars about eleven years ago, and we came out with it for two reasons. One, for sanitary sewer market, which everybody knows sanitary sewer, if something happens to it, you got a bigger problem than if something happens to a storm drain pipe. So, this is rated for sanitary sewer, but it's also for areas where maybe the backfill opportunities and the soil that's available aren't quite as good, or maybe we got some contractors that don't take as much care. So, that's why we came out with this product. Now, for my prop, to explain the difference between polyethylene, the black pipe, and polypropylene, the gray pipe, just an ordinary Pepsi bottle or DIP Pepsi bottle, this pipe, this bottle is made out of polypropylene, polyethylene, the black pipe, sorry, thank you. This is made out of the same material as the black pipe. Good, strong material, you put it, you know, good backfill around it, it's going to last for a long time. This cap, which you, I mean, you guys know, I mean, you got a water bottle over there, the cap is a lot stiffer and stronger than the bottle. So, this product is stronger and stiffer than the traditional black pipe that y'all are used to seeing. It's two to three times as stiff, as a matter of fact. It is a watertight joint, and I hate to say, Jason, we'd be my fan, because you're not a very good-looking man, but if you can help me, if you can hold that in, I'll hold this in. Again, if you're not familiar with our black pipe, this, this is called the bell, the bell into the pipe. This bell is deeper than, than the black pipe bell. Then we have a longer, what that's called the spigot end. When you put this together the best we can, that is a watertight joint. Because it is a sanitary sewer product, it has to be watertight. Our black pipe is not necessarily watertight, it's soil tight. So, again, this is just a superior product to what maybe y'all have been used to. We certainly welcome the opportunity to work with y'all on the pilot project, just to show you, you don't have to use expensive soil, backfill, rock as the backfill, that's not necessary, like it would be with, with the H D P E, the black pipe. It's less contractor sensitive. Whatever kind of parameters, Chad and you guys want to set up for a pilot project, that's what we're here for. We can certainly have personnel out there. We talked earlier in his office about doing some kind of contractor certification. We've done this in other cities, where if a contractor wants to install this pipe in, in the city of Perry right away, he has to have undergone a course given by us on how to install it properly and the different, you know, nuances and things like that. So, whatever we need to do to work with y'all to make you feel comfortable, that's what we're here for. So, any questions or anything, please, that's why we're here.
Mr. Felder, how long have you had the D O T certification to use the pipe on our there a lot of?
That was a year, year and a half ago.
Yes, for the H P pipe. We've had it, we've had it with our black pipe since May of two thousand and six, and it's A D T restricted, but, but this is, the enhancement on the gray pipe has been official since, I think, middle of, summer of last year.
It was allowed to value to two.
That's right.
I remember when they, they said it did.
That was the reason for that time, when y'all came out there.
Okay, that's, that's why we're here.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any failures?
Not, not, no, none that I'm aware of.
Do you have any other organizations or municipality, county governments who are using this product now?
Millisville, a month ago, yeah, and then the last month, I actually wrote a letter approving this, this product, as well as our H, the black pipe, and certain applications. I'm from Alabama, and I'm, the city of Olajica, which is real close to Auburn, almost to the Georgia line, about six, eight months ago approved it inside the right way for subdivision and capital improvement projects. There's plenty of, I know in Alabama that I've worked on, I apologize, I've only been working in Georgia for about a month and a half, so I'm not as familiar with it. A lot of counties in Alabama are using it under the road, cross drains. It certainly saves them a lot of money. It's twenty-foot lay lengths, as opposed to some of our competitors that make it eight-foot length, so they can lay a lot more pipe in a day. If it's a real critical, if you had to close a road, the last thing you want to do is have the road closed for three days. You can typically put this together and get the road back open, you know, in a day, just because of how lightweight it is and the twenty-foot lengths.
Do y'all warrant your product?
Yes, we have a warranty on the product.
Is that warranted to the contractor who installs it, or is it to be in use?
I believe it's to whoever bought it, that this is like the contractor, like the end user. And it's, the way it's written is basically a lifetime warranty. Fifty years from now, you dig it up and find out that we didn't make this properly, we'll replace it.
One thing to add too, is the standards, the county, the house and county and all the cities want to follow the same written standards. And I'm in the progress of doing this. The city of Warren Robbins, since Forrest Walker's taken over up there, we've done, we've, we've got some pilot projects in the ground under the roadways. We've got some in the city right of ways, and we have a subdivision that's actually going in now as well. And I'm doing the same thing with Brian Jones, all that construction mess up there at ninety-six and, and Lake Joy, we've got some, we've got some H P, but we have some H D P pipe under there as well. So, this is all going to kind of snowball together once we, once we kind of get all you guys, Centerville included, with Rick and those guys. So, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do.
Just curiosity, how you fit it? Solve the whole thing?
Yes, just to solve, solve.
And then we have, if you have to cut out in the field, if you have to cut a piece of pipe and then join another piece of pipe with it, we make fittings and couplers to do that out in the field, make it very easy for contractors. And I bought, I brought a few information packs. Unfortunately, the printer at the Hampton Inn ran out of ink, so not all of it printed, but I'll leave these for anybody that would like it. It's got an installation detail on the back, and then this is just a standard product brochure, so I'll leave these for y'all. It's got Jason's card, and he is the local guy. Any further questions?
Yes. Mr. Murray, anything further?
I had a few comments to wrap it up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Feld. Thank you all for coming.
Oh, I, my, my personal opinion of the product, I think it worked well in the city. However, I do have inspection concerns, being as I can't be on-site in this particular pilot project, I think we have fifteen locations across the road. It'd be impossible for me to be out there the entire time to inspect them. So, at minimal requirements, if we do move forward, I would like to see some, some, either some language from A D S in warranty, that is how to inspect properly, and a training class for whoever the contractor may be in this project or projects in the future to be qualified to install this product properly. So, those are my major concerns on, on that. Any questions from, from Council that would be interested to consider the pilot project?
Well, if we, we consider the pilot project, will you apply all of the recommendations and Mr. Burke?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Because he has some very specific things that would be required for the pilot project.
Absolutely, the recommendations that came from him, I would require all of those and then plus optional the ones that I added to this.
Y'all already can provide that anyway, don't you?
Yes.
Or have that as an option.
Right.
Mr. Gilmore, you have any thoughts?
Underneath the conditions that have been stated, I think it's worthwhile for this new product. You know, even if D O T did certify the black pipe, we've got a bunch of problems with black pipe. Some of y'all may remember, that's why we were going back and made a change, reinforced concrete. The other thing I think that's important with this too, and where we're talking about the trials and everything, are on basically subdivision streets. You know, we're not talking about collectors or arterials right now until we get a better handle of how well, how well they hold up. But, you know, relative to that, I think it'd be worthwhile for us to give it a try.
I do believe I'll continue to hear, in future projects, as these have already been added to D O T, every, whether it's a developer or an engineer, they constantly ask, can we use A D S? And I have to have some type of answer for them, either it's under a trial basis or it's approved or it's an offer.
That is important, trial basis, Council. That senses to move forward. Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We appreciate it. Mr. Gilmore's up for it. No, two sentences here for how, very good, thank you. Item three C, Department of Economic Development, three C one, is a hotel market assessment study.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Council, sure, reverse the shares here. As you are aware, the city has been working with Forebath Consulting, hospitality consulting firm out of Atlanta, on completion of a hotel feasibility study or market assessment study. I'm pleased to let you know that the study has been completed and the results are favorable. You should have received a memo and a copy of the study in your box. I hope you had a chance to look through it. Basically, the gist of it is that the city and our market is favorable for the development of an additional eighty to one hundred-room hotel property, mid-scale to upper mid-scale hotel property. Something that I have noticed as I've come aboard, and I know you all have noticed the same, you've probably heard it from people in Fairgrounds, Guardian Center, that type of thing, is that the city needs more quality hotel rooms. Yes, we thought that was the case, and now we finally have an objective study, a quantified, quantifiable study, that lets, you know, us know and lets developers know that that is indeed the case, that the city does have the market to absorb additional hotel rooms. And it also goes as far as to recommend types of hotels, properties, rooms, the types of amenities and that type of thing, that we should be pursuing, or we're talking with developers about doing something here in Perry. And I can also tell you that it's already paid, we've also, we've already re-fruited from it, I don't know if that's correct terminology, but I have already spoken with a developer who's interested in the city of Perry, and he's very excited about the results of the feasibility study. So, things are good with it. I'm very pleased with the work that Forebath did, I hope you are as well. I've done this very quality report, it's a very adept report. And as you're going through it, if you have any questions or anything, please let me know. Any questions up, up your heads?
What's the next step? Is there another, a next step?
Sure, the next step is now that we have this ammunition, if you will, we can begin approaching developers, hospitality developers, or investors and that type of thing, and letting them know that, hey, we're here, we have the market to absorb the type of property that you typically develop, you know, why don't you come take a look at Perry? Here's our feasibility study, take a look at it, and, you know, sell our community as best we can. You know, because it was a situation where prior to having this study, which is one of the main reasons I approached you about it in the first place, was when I met a few developers, a few hospitality, hotel developers, you know, they were, where's your feasibility study, you know, where's your building for certain numbers and that type of thing? Now I have that, you know, as opposed to saying, well, you know, we think we need these rooms, you know, sure, we need another, you know, Holiday Express or something. Now we, we have it, we get approached developers about it. So, that, that would be the next step. And as you're aware, Georgia Power, again, I want to thank Georgia Power, contributing the two thousand dollars to completion of the study. They're very interested in seeing the city of Perry a good initial hotel as well, and we'll be sharing it with the C V B and that type of thing. So, it's something that not only the city can utilize, but some of our partners.
Council, any further thoughts? Do you need some work on this?
Mayor, if I may, and I'll probably come back to you, if you remember, that you just missed a memo, it was some possible incentive suggestions. That was referenced in there.
Sorry, I failed to mention that, thank Mr. Gilmore. One of the recommendations that the hotel consultants did put out there was that we need to look into having some sort of incentive package for hotel development. Nothing too large, you know, they gave kind of the estimated range, about two percent of the total project costs. This is something that a lot of communities are now doing. Something, you know, traditionally you look at incentives, and you're thinking manufacturers, large employers and that type of thing, but it is becoming more and more common for cities and counties to incentivize hotel development. It might bring only, you know, ten to twelve jobs, but the investment is significant. And I actually am working on a, an impact assessment that I will get with you in the future, get to you in the future, that it's looking like if the city were to invest some sort of incentive package, the equivalent of two percent of the typical hotel project cost, the payoff on that would be about two years, or the break-even point would be about two years. So, you're looking at additional property tax revenues, hotel motel tax revenues, sales tax revenues, you know, a whole host of benefits, I think, that would greatly outweigh the cost of any sort of incentive package. So, I am exploring those options, and I will be getting with y'all in the future and looking at doing something along those lines.
Sounds good to me. Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Item three C two, is for Perry Opportunity Zone Staff.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I love having half the agenda. Mayor and Council, as you're aware, the city of Perry has an opportunity zone. For those of you that might not be aware, this is a very significant incentive that is administered by the state by the Department of Community Affairs, that allows for the maximum job tax credits for employers that are to locate within that opportunity zone. It's, you know, it's one of those things that if you have that in your community, it makes you a lot more competitive when looking at when sites like there's a location, or that type of thing, and looking at that community. Because, you know, if you're, if you're looking at a significant employer, they can save a lot of money on an annual basis with those job tax credits. So, back in two thousand and eight, the city got on board early, we managed to get most of the city as an opportunity zone. It was quite the coup for us as a community that we were able to do that, and we've been enjoying the benefits from that for a while now. Unfortunately, Opportunity Zone expires in November twenty eighteen. Each Opportunity Zone is actually there for a period of ten years, incentive period of ten years. So, we're already working to get ahead of this and try and make sure that we don't, A, lose Opportunity Zone altogether, and B, make sure that we have that Opportunity Zone moving forward that is closely mirrored as Opportunity Zone we have right now as possible. I can tell you that just through changes in administration at the state level, through changes in interpretation of the enabling legislation and that type of thing, the program has been curtailed a significant bit, you know, to go from allowing us to have a swath of the city, we're going to probably be looking forward at this required to have, you know, parcels and that type of thing. We're still working on it. D C A does not really, they're not really sure about how they're going to do this. It's kind of, everyone got on board early, and now these communities are starting to have their opportunities expire with a different administration and that type of thing, they're going to be rolling out some guidance on how to proceed. But I can tell you, it's looking like at this point in time, we're basically going to have to do the whole thing over again. I approached them about perhaps submitting some sort of, you know, a nice letter from the mayor, request an extension of Opportunity Zone or something like that, they're not going to entertain that option. So, it's looking like we're going to have to go and redevelop our, our redevelopment plan. It's one of those things that Opportunity Zone is tightly connected to our redevelopment plan. Redo our redevelopment plan to basically mirror what we want to see in redevelopment here in Perry, what we want to see in regards to Opportunity Zone, and then actually apply for a new Opportunity Zone after working with the state, and coming up with a territory, with boundaries for Opportunity Zone that we think could be beneficial and that could pass the test at the state level, if you will. It's kind of convoluted. It's going to be a significant process, coming, coming up with a new redevelopment plan and then a new Opportunity Zone and that type of stuff. But we're working with the development authority on this, we're working with the state on this, both our local Department of Economic Development representative and our local D C A representative, we've already had meetings, so we're moving forward with it. Our goal on this is to, November eighteenth is when our current Opportunity Zone expires, to have another one in place that goes into effect November nineteenth, twenty eighteen. And we've already notified, or in the process of notifying, all four hundred forty, four hundred thirty businesses that are in our current Opportunity Zone. You know, if y'all are looking at doing something, if you're looking at doing some hiring, if you're looking at a major expansion and that type of thing, it may behoove you to go ahead and do that. So, working with other businesses and keeping them apprised of what's going on with that as well.
Mr. Smith, anything more to redo these plans, as you put it, do you need help from the regional commission, that it would coordinate these efforts among these different individuals? Is that something that you think you've had time to do in house? And the second part of that question is, that plan has to be a part of the application, and I don't, from what you're saying, I don't think that application is formulated yet from, from the state at, at this point, is it not?
It's not.
Okay, so we don't know what the rules are yet, but we do know we're going to have to do some things in order to comply.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that is correct. It's a good thought, bringing the regional commission in on this, actually did our original re redevelopment plan and Opportunities Zone application. I'll explore, working with them on that, see if that's something they want to participate with.
Well, we're going to have to tell them what we want, and, and since we don't know what the rules are yet, I know, I know what we want. We want to provide the best economic incentives that we can for expansion of our existing companies and new ones that might wish to come. I understand that, but we need to position ourselves, obviously, to be in the best light in order to qualify under the application when it finally gets here.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure, that, that seems to be a little bit a target based on what you've told them.
It is.
And I know it might be a little bit, might be a little bit hard to have that unless the regional commission has information or data that, that we could utilize that might And I know it might be a little bit, might be a little bit hard to have that, unless the regional commission has information or data that we could utilize that might help fairly quick. Does that make sense?
It does, they have a lot of resources. I'm not sure they have any information beyond what we already have. But they do, you know, they're always kept in the loop on that type of thing. It's, it's one of those interesting situations. The Department of Community Affairs is the one that developed and implemented this plan and the opportunities and this stuff, but it's really the Georgia Department of Economic Development that utilizes it. So there's, you know, they're working together and trying to come up with a compromise, if you will, that could benefit both and obviously benefit our businesses and that type of thing. So we'll stay on top of it, as soon as we get that guidance, you know, we'll really be able to start formulating that plan, formulating an opportunities and application. But this is just something, you know, it is, again, a significant thing for the city, and I just wanted to keep y'all apprised.
Very good. And then, council? Mr. Gilmore?
Well, I think the major thing for council right now is to be thinking about what are the top priority areas in the city that you would want to potentially see, you know, for this opportunity zone to be provided. Because that will provide some type of guise relative to the redevelopment plan which has to be done. The other thing that I consider a super negative from what Robert advised me on is they're also talking about the fact that you can't use any undeveloped land. So in other words, that wouldn't, as far as I know, you know, that potentially could knock out vacant parcels that you even have in an area that you want to have redeveloped. Certainly it's going to impact us relative to our industrial park, where we may want to make some additions to that. Now, that's not confirmed, you know, go back what Robert said, but that is, you know, the general direction seems to be to really cut down the number of options that you're going to be able to have for this, so.
Because a significant effect of Fort and Hydrus were to be included in it, but the number of vacant lots around there that have been built.
Correct, or even more so for example, like Kelly dropped.
Right, exactly.
Kind of adding to what Mr. Gilmore was saying, you know, it is unfortunate, it does look like they're not going to allow green fields or undeveloped parcels to be included in opportunities zones anymore. Also, probably not parcels that have current operating businesses on them. So it could, could be bad, but that's worst case scenario. And that's just kind of some of the stuff we're hearing, so it may not be the case at all.
That would limit you extremely if you, it's an operating business, park, greenfield, so all you got is a vacant building.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
That's about.
And of course, it really hurts unless they have determined they're going to have a site that qualifies existing building or existing industry to expand on, because most of them are going to want to add on to, you know, wherever they are. Or they have a situation, for example, in Sand Hill, you know, where they have their one plant they have right now, then their phase two, which is a new plant on vacant, or as Robert said, greenfield property. So one of the other things we may need y'all to be thinking about too, is it seems to come along, we may need your assistance talking with our friends in the General Assembly about some suggestions on that as well.
Anything further?
No, sorry.
Thank you.
Item 3C3, the 2017 CDVG administration.
Mr. Mayor, mayor and council, you recall, I think it was in January, at one of your work sessions, you incurred with moving forward with the submission of the 2017 CDVG application. As you're aware, this will be working on more housing in the Sand Hill neighborhood, more rehabilitation, more reconstruction, that type of thing. As is required with any sort of CDVG application or project, we went ahead and completed the administrative procurement process. You have before your memo kind of outlining the process, and staff is recommending that the city chooses Grant Specialists of Georgia Inc. and Miss Sherri Kurtz to move forward with preparation of our application, and should it be submitted, or should it be approved, administration of our project.
Council?
She's done an outstanding job on the one that just got approved, and it was very, very thorough. I was really impressed with the quality of work that she has done, and she secured the grant. So I would have no problem with her moving forward on this one.
Very good. Does that require vote, Mr. Gilmore?
No, since this would be like professional services, we all just concur to stick with the same.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Gilmore, anything else to come before us on items, free for items, if we have any discussion?
No, sir.
After item four, council member items, Mr. Lionel Grace? Mr. Walker? No. Mr. Jackson? Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
No, sir.
And Mr. Holm, welcome.
Thank you.
You have any more?
Certainly not.
Certainly, certainly. Item five of Department of Economic Development, anything further?
One more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor and council, you would please to know that work has started on the 2016 CDVG project, 713 Elaine Street. There's currently a contracting crew in there doing work. The house is in very bad shape, and they're going to be doing extensive rehabilitation work to that house. It's a situation prior to the work getting started, everyone's calling, you know, well, where's my money? When's the stuff going to start and all that? And now that the contracting crew in there, well, what's going on over there? What's happening over there? So just wanted to let y'all be aware, the project's finally moving forward. It's going to be something great for Elaine Street.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Leisure Services, Mr. Dye?
Yes, sir, mayor and council, I have one item ready for you tonight. I was approached recently by a couple that is interested in purchasing and donating a piece of playground equipment to either the work department or county park. What they are proposing is working with me, as per my discretion, as to the quality, commercial grade, the type of equipment. They have a few little things that they had ideas about, but really just want to do something for the beauty. So before moving forward on that, I wanted to speak with you, get your feel about it. I actually have never been approached by a family, you know, a single unit, wanting to do something like this, or working with businesses that have done it before. Just wanted to fill it out and see what you thought.
Just to say yes.
To say, like I said, it would be, it would be something, and now knowing that moving forward, that I would talk to them about the scope and the scale and the size. And just that, once it's given to us, it becomes part of the city, and to be utilized at our discretion.
Okay. We would trust your discretion that you're not going to allow anything to be purchased that's going to require six hours of maintenance.
Absolutely not. That's all I, thank you.
Sounds correct.
Mayor, I have another thing I'm trying to work on too. Many members from the office of the mayor, a question about some of the playground stuff being, you know, seven to 10, you know, seven younger ones, so that's going to be one of the focuses.
Sounds correct. Thank you, Mr. Dye. Sir, from the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood?
Nothing in action.
Thank you. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn?
Nothing in eyes, sir.
Thank you. Department of Financial Administration, Ms. King?
Nothing in eyes, sir.
Thank you. From Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker?
Nothing in eyes, sir.
Thank you. Is there anything from the city clerk's office?
No, sir.
You sure? Everybody got their stuff in?
No.
We have homework, just so everybody knows, we're supposed to give this warrant, our probation, I just want to make certain we didn't want it to go. Fantastic, thank you very much, and thank you, council. Some of us didn't follow directions. Anyway, thank you for the information from that sample. From the Department of Public Works, Ms. Shell?
Just one quick thing, mayor and council. We had the animal shelter suspended last week, or week before, it's our week back, for asbestos, so that everybody's on the same page, there was no asbestos found, so they can proceed with the bids on the demolition of the old animal shelter, not the new. Let's be clear, the old animal shelter, not the new.
That might be a career limiting move.
You're right. I don't know if you got the message, Chief, but I returned your call today, so. And Ms. King had asked me about that before we got started, so.
Very good.
So everybody in it.
That's good news, thank you, sir.
Do you plan to leave the new pens that were built by Ford Hall?
Yes, just the cinder block building.
The cinder block.
Yeah, just that force of.
I guess the framework in the back.
Even that'll disappear there.
I hope so.
Yeah, but the wooden structure, the new stuff that was Ford Hall, that's all going to remain.
Good, fantastic.
Could you tell me the cost of the new pipe? On top of, so, second type pipe? Going in, from here?
From Mr. Gold?
Yeah, Gold. Are you asking me? Yes. No, sir, I don't have any idea with that. That was probably ESG.
From EST.
That'd be ESG.
I'm sorry. Just, no, no.
Mr. Moore? The M and N course?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. McGee?
No, sir.
You don't have a thinking for me? Thank you. We do have a meeting tomorrow. Our pre-council meeting is at 5:00, upstairs in the conference room, our council meeting will be at 6:00. House of County Development already has a monthly meeting on Wednesday morning at 7:45 in their offices. That's all I have to say.
And if you have a reservation, you can gather, we have you to sit by.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gilmore.
I was saying, you have no meeting right after this one?
No, he was talking about Thursday night. There's a meeting, we'd have Thursday night if you'd like to gather. We have a joint meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission tonight at 6:00. Am I missing anything?
I did.
I'm just about done. In fact, I'm done. I'm not getting any participation, I stand in turn.